All right, we're calling the meeting in order. Role call present myself, fire trustee chair Eugene Dugan.
Yeah, his place trustee.
Walt Berry, remember?
Steve Arval trustee.
Greg Williams staff.
William Johnston staff.
Jacob's W T W.
Thanks Cole.
All right, we have an agenda before us. We'd like to make some changes. Bob is supposed to be on line with us eventually. But can't make it this month due to a illness. We recommended moving the item best determined member benefit eligibility to the next available meeting. And since he's not here, we don't have one scheduled in July, we can discuss later on meeting. Want to shoot for July or push it to the office? Is there any other amendments to the agenda? That's the amended agenda. Is there a motion to accept? So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, we were all distributed the minutes from May 25th. Is there any objection to waive the reading of the minutes for approval? Was that an objection?
I said no objection.
All right, seeing none and hearing none, we will consider the minutes from May approved. All right. I don't think Bob's on yet as far as I can see.
He won't be on this morning.
He won't be on at all?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought he.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I spoke with him briefly yesterday. I thought he said he wasn't.
He.
Tried.
He.
He tried to trust.
Wasn't really even feeling up to be on this, which is why I was suggesting possibly July.
Okay.
If we're waiting on him, though, it'll be it'll be around his schedule, I guess.
Yeah.
Let's throw a couple of dates out.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. I'm moving right along. Presentation from Cole, Will Starwood Watson and Jacob also.
Yep, thanks everyone. So a pretty standard agenda today. We'll give a quick capital markets update and look at the plan performance as well as we do every meeting. But in addition to that, we're also going to just dive a little bit deeper into a strategy review kind of background on how we got the portfolio where it is. So spend just a little bit more time on that since we don't have a investment manager calling in today. So with that, I may start on slide four. Just give a brief capital markets review. We have data here that is through April, but obviously markets have been pretty volatile. So I'll just kind of speak to some some updates since then. The top left corner of the screen, you can see the equity market returns year to date are the yellow bars. So through April, S and P 500 is down 13%. It's currently down as of, you know, factoring in the futures this morning, it's currently down about 22% year to date. So we've continued to see more volatility, you know, through April into May and June as well. Same can be said for the rest of the indices listed here. Just kind of further deterioration in valuations. The Federal Reserve last week announced that they were lifting their interest rate 75 basis points. That is the highest amount they have lifted interest rates since 1994. The market initially responded pretty positively to that, given the fact they were trying to, you know, combat inflation. But since then, it's sold off even a little bit more. The Fed will meet again in July and there's a 90% chance currently that they will raise interest rates by another 75 basis points. So we're seeing kind of a much more kind of tightening of monetary policy and the Federal Reserve is taking this very seriously now. And doing everything in their power to combat inflation. So we'll keep a close eye on on the rest of the indices. GDP growth was a little bit negative for the first quarter. That information will come out here in the next few weeks. So we'll see what that looks like for the second quarter of the year. And across the curve on the bottom right treasury rates that pink line, you know, above 3% everywhere from pretty much the two year all the way out to the 30 year. So very kind of flat yield curve with rates increasing significantly year to date. Not much relief and updates since we spoke last month on capital markets. So they remain very volatile. So we'll keep a close eye on on everything. Happy to answer any questions if there are any. So moving on into planned performance, also looking at the year to date column. The total plan has returned 11.2% so far for the first four months of the year. That's slightly underneath the policy benchmark of 9.1%. So roughly in line with the benchmark, a little bit underneath due to some of the equity managers, really just the international equity manager. The domestic equity segment returning minus 13.4% pretty much in line with its benchmark. LSV minus 6.8% right in line with its benchmark. Vanguard, of course, being an index fund right on top of its benchmark and then sustainable growth advisors down 22% versus 20 for its benchmark. So really kind of all those managers right on top of their benchmarks for the most part. Growth is experiencing much more volatility than the value counterpart. So you can see that sustainable growth advisors is suffering. A little bit worse performance year to date, a little bit more impacted by that interest rate rise in that part of the market. Small cap segment, pretty similar story. LSV down 7.4 versus 10 for the benchmark. So actually performing pretty well. All things considered and disciplined growth investors down about 20% versus about 23 for its benchmark. So also performing pretty well, all things considered. Long term performance for all these funds, as you can see, remains really, really strong, though. Despite the volatility we've seen so far this year, the last three years have had double digit returns. So certainly just kind of depending on what timeframe you're looking at, performance is still pretty strong across the board. And lastly, more I mentioned, struggling a little bit, kind of dragging down the the growth segment somewhat year to date. They're down about 18% and the benchmarks is down about 11. They don't have any exposure to some of the energy names that have done really well with the oil price increase. So continuing to keep a close eye on them. But once again, long term numbers remain really strong. Rounding out performance, looking at the income segment, it's actually positive performance year to date. So certainly adding value to the portfolio when equity markets are being volatile. So that's kind of and we'll talk about more more about this on the later slides, but you know, that's the intention of this piece of the portfolio is you know, relying more on income of these underlying investments than appreciation. So in periods of volatility, we would expect this to kind of hold up a little bit better. And that's kind of what we're seeing. Alternative credit slightly negative as a whole. Interest rates are up a lot, as I mentioned, as well as credit spreads have expanded. But despite that, all these funds performing in line with their benchmark. A couple of them in positive territory like One Sharp and Libor Max. So continuing to kind of perform in line with their expectations and mitigate some of that volatility. And lastly, the real estate segment really kind of driving the overall positive performance of the overall income segment. Principal and Harrison Street both performing in positive territory thus far year to date. Both are slightly below the Nikriff O D C E index that we show them against here. But both in positive territory and balancing out each other really well. Principal up eight and a half and Harrison Street up about two and a half so far this year. Any questions on any of the performance of the plan year to date before we kind of jump into the next section?
The Harrison Street performance relative to principles, that really just comes down to the segments that they're focused on as opposed to principles?
That's exactly right. Yeah. So principal kind of plays in what we call the four main food groups. So industrial different housing markets, et cetera, really industrials kind of is what is what's driving that more than more than the other segments. Harrison Street there and you know, student housing, senior housing, a little bit more niche sectors. Those two in particular obviously have not done the best during the pandemic. So that's kind of what is driving their performance a little bit weaker than principles. But overall remains like the total portfolio is very diversified. So.
I might just kind of reframe that a little bit. So what you saw with principal, given their exposure to those more kind of economically sensitive and cyclical sectors, if you will. So retail office, they're like it's suffer performance is much weaker heading kind of in the initial months of the pandemic than Harrison Street. And so what you've seen over the past kind of year along with kind of the broader equity market recovery has been kind of an upswing in the performance of the principal US property fund. But if you had kind of rewound the clock to kind of a year and a half ago, two years ago, Harrison Street was outperforming on a relative basis. So what what you see with Harrison Street, given their niche focus as Cole was referring to is just a much more stable kind of return profile. So what we would expect from both of these managers over a full cycle is similar performance and that's seven to nine percent range, which is what you're seeing. The principal numbers are just going to be much more volatile, given their overall exposure to corporate earnings and the economic cycle more generally.
Yeah, and you can actually see that in the since inception numbers kind of on the far right. Principal up 7.8 and then Harrison Street up 7.7. So over the long term, just as Zach mentioned, kind of that's seven to eight percent on average annual return.
We've owned that since August 19th, August 2, 19? 2019?
Yep, yeah, that's right.
Time flies.
Time flies, yeah.
That was a good move.
You know, not to confuse the issue, but we have two new real estate managers that will be funding when they when they call the capital. Harrison Street is it's another another niche product from Harrison Street is one of those.
That's what I mean. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yep. And then and the new vein industrial fund, which I mentioned that sector has been more robust than others.
Relatively recent. So thank you.
Yep. So maybe we'll switch gears and go into the next section, which is the strategy review. And so really, we just want to give Kevin overview of the portfolio objectives and positioning background on how we got here, outlook going forward and answer any questions that that the board has. And so before I turn it over to Zach to walk us through the bulk of the materials, just wanted to give a quick update on slide nine as to some background as as to how we got here. So in 2017, the board decided to move to the delegated model and we've listed a few of the main reasons for doing so here. In the first section, in looking to achieve the board's objectives, some of the main reasons for making this change. We're reducing your time and involvement and day to day management of the plan, which enables you to focus on on bigger decisions. Don't have to spend time working on manager contracting trades, et cetera. So kind of the operations piece has been taken on by our team. It also allows you to seek the same higher return on assets, but at a lower level of volatility, which we'll speak more about in the following slides. It allows access to our best in class managers and real time portfolio management should you need it. So it enables us to, you know, to trade quickly if markets move in certain direction and always bringing you, you know, our best ideas. And then at the time of delegation, the fees were significantly reduced. And then as it stands right now, fees are currently break even for a like to like portfolio. So you're not you're not paying any more per se at a total level for the same portfolio that you have currently. And then from a plan sponsor perspective, from a city perspective, obviously a large drawdown in assets would inhibit your ability to meet your future return target. So what we looked at there was, you know, any kind of unplanned unbudgeted contributions would be linked to to budget. So trying to diversify the portfolio as much as possible and mitigate those large swings and returns. And hopefully, you know, reduce unexpected contributions was the main objective from a plan sponsor perspective. So that's a high level review of kind of how we got here, why we made the change. So there's no questions. Zach will walk us through kind of what the portfolio looks like and some metrics behind it.
Thanks, Cole. Yeah. So on slide time, we kind of have the the high level message here. And so just for background for the committee's benefit, you know, the portfolio that we've designed here is designed in such a way to meet the long term expected return on plan assets. So a little bit under 8%. You know, key component of achieving that objective, that return objective is a large allocation to to equity. So that's why we see, you know, 70% on a target basis of the current assets being allocated to to equity markets. Now, a few years ago, we introduced target allocations to alternative credit and real assets as a means of continuing to meet that return objective, but to minimize the volatility along the way by introducing asset classes where more of the returns are coming from income as opposed to growth, which is what you see in equity markets. Now, last year, we then took those two buckets of alternative credit and real assets. Instead of maintaining separate targets to each, we combined them into a single 30% income allocation, really as a means of kind of formalizing the way we were already thinking about it, which is, you know, we're not looking to maintain a set allocation to real estate or alternative credit, but rather we're looking to take a portion of the portfolios of 30% and meet use that portion of the portfolio to meet the portfolio's overall return objectives via income like return drivers, right? So we didn't want to be forced to own you know, portions of the alternative credit market that weren't going to support meeting that long term return objectives simply because we had a target to alternative credit. And so you recall last year, we removed a few funds in the portfolio due to future return expectations in those asset classes. So two key ones there was global sovereign credit and core securitized and both of which we we hold actually in other portfolios. Other client portfolios here at W T W with lower return objectives. And I can say that, you know, from a timing perspective, while we were looking out over the next five to 10 years, you know, since we made that move, neither one of those asset classes has has kind of performed very well. So it was it was fortunate from a time perspective as well. So that's where we sit today. So from a target perspective, 70% allocation to equity, 30% allocation to income, which is currently split roughly 12 and a half percent to alternative credit and the remainder 17 and a half to real assets. We think about looking forward to how, you know, Cole previewed a little bit how we're thinking about markets. But I think the the high level summary right now is just there's a lot of uncertainty out there. So as the Fed continues to hike rates to head off inflation and kind of works harder and harder to achieve this, you know, somewhat elusive soft landing. We are looking for assets that are well positioned to the degree that you can be for that type of environment. So an environment with potentially high inflation and an environment where we could possibly see a a small recession, right? And so the types of assets that tend to perform well in that type of environment are assets with much more stable cash flow profile. So income oriented assets and and primarily income oriented assets that have a direct or indirect tie to inflation, which will which we'll get into in a little bit. So all that being said, I mean, based on how the given the portfolio's current return objectives and the asset classes available to invest in here, that we think the portfolio remains appropriately positioned. So we're not recommending any changes at this time, but we've just prepared these materials to refresh for the committee, our beliefs in terms of portfolio strategy and outlook. So that's what we're going to go through today, just kind of high level overview of future return expectations and a little bit more detail on how we think about investing in alternative credit in real assets, but not recommending any changes at this time. So on this next slide here, this, I think, this is a very good slide in in terms of illustrating the trade offs of various allocations. And so what we have here modeled is our current target allocation. So that's 70% to growth oriented assets of equity and the 30% to income. And we've compared that to an all equity portfolio. It's a common question we get, not just from the committee here, but from, you know, from other clients with large return objectives as well, you know, equities have performed quite well historically. They tend to be one of the higher expected returning asset classes. So why not just put all of our money? Now, of course, the market environment year to date is a is a good example of real life, the risks involved in that, right? As we've seen kind of equity markets sell off over 20% and that income sleeve that we're currently investing in kind of hold pretty steady. But this is based on forward expectations. And so what you can see here is really two things. One, from a return perspective, that 10 year return number at the bottom there, 7.9%. Whether we're in this allocation, the 70 30 or the 100% equity allocation based on our capital market assumptions, the long term returns are effectively the same. So both are expected to meet objectives, right? So clear that hurdle of 7.75% at the median. And they're both expected to return about 7.9%. So regardless of which kind of allocation we went with, we'd be looking at a similar return, both of which are kind of consistent with objectives. The difference really comes down to between the two allocations comes down to what I was mentioning earlier, and that's the kind of stability factor, right? And so what you see with the current allocation versus the all equity allocation is again, the same return profile, but with just much less volatility around it, right? So you could think about by moving to that income sleeve, you're just taking the potential return distribution and limiting it more at the to the median, right? So you're kind of cutting off the tails, both positive and negative such that your return expectation on average is the same, but there's just much less upside, which we don't really need, right? And there's much less downside, which which we do need. And so this is, that's what you're seeing kind of graphically here. And that's what you're seeing in the numbers in terms of the annualized volatility and and the 5% value at risk that that 5% value at risk, you can think of that in as kind of a in a worst case type scenario within a given year, what you would expect from the two allocations. So any questions on on what's being shown here on the page before we can move on?
Is our current policy 70 30 or was it 75 25?
Currently, from a target perspective, it's 70 30.
With these new purchases, we're planning on doing, we're going to get more in line. We're a little off right now.
Exactly. Yep.
If we had to buy those today, where would we get the money?
Where would we source the money? So.
We've been looking at who's a little better.
Yeah. So we we would look to to the degree it made sense to rebalance within the equity allocation, but the kind of the the natural source of funds and would be probably the the Vanguard passive vehicle. Unless you saw one of those active managers way kind of above target.
What we'll typically do is look and see if if managers are over their targets.
Right.
Turn them back.
I was just curious right now, because everyone's down a little, right? But some aren't down as much.
Right.
It's in that 30%. The real estate.
Right.
So why?
Then it wouldn't. Then it wouldn't shift into our policy targets, right?
Yeah. So if we were taking April market values as as kind of a given, what we were what we would see is the the current small cap equity segment is a bit above target. LSV small cap equity, given their value bias is above, you know, the the seven and a half percent target allocation. So that would be a potential source of funds. But the way these real asset mandates are typically funded is not all of the commitment is called at once. So we would expect kind of bits and pieces to come in. So the the source of funds, you know, will change, but to William's point, it's going to be based on, you know, who's above target and and things like that. So the next slide, slide 12 shows you know, another way of kind of looking at this. So you know, what is allowing for that return distribution to kind of live more at the median as opposed to to the tails? And it's it's simply based on kind of broadening the the underlying return drivers, right? So this kind of breaks out nicely some of the different inputs into portfolio returns and the way we think about it. And so you have equity, of course, you have skill, which you can think of kind of a manager outperforming their benchmark. Then you have these other ones right here in the middle, that if you're running an all equity portfolio, you're not really accessing some things like credit risk, things like term risk, things like real assets, liquidity, right? And so within the income sleeve, those are some of the buckets, credit, real assets and liquidity that we're looking to increase exposure to, which allows again for a similar return expectation, but with much less risk. Given your broadening kind of the underlying drivers that you're relying upon. So the next slide speaks a little bit then to how we think about building the income segment more generally. And again, you know, it's the same things that we we keep kind of hitting on. So diversification, right? So looking to gain access to return drivers that are different from equities that we just showed on the on the previous page. And return drivers importantly, that are less exposed to the broader economic cycle, such that if we were to enter a recessionary environment, there'd be some amount of resilience within the portfolio. The other key thing in addition to some of the, you know, the other ones on here like fees, of course, and specialists is the cash flow generation piece, right? So looking to access strategies where the primary return component is going to be income as opposed to growth. And and the nice thing about income is that tends to be steady year over year, whereas growth can fluctuate quite significantly. So those are kind of the the two key things when we're thinking about, you know, what makes sense for in addition to the income segment, it's going to be, you know, one, does it meet the portfolio's return objectives? And two, is it meeting those return objectives by relying on return drivers that are different from equities and a kind of source of returns that are primarily income related? So there's two kind of components of this income segment currently. If we go to the next slide. The first is the credit or the alternative credit component. So the managers within that currently would be the Ares High Yield Fund, the B and Y Mellon Fallen Angels Fund, the Libor Max Value Fund and the the One Sharp Fund as well. So those four funds are what sit within the alternative credit bucket. And the way we think about, you know, building an alternative credit bucket is laid out here nicely on the page in terms of diversification, not just by manager, right? But by underlying exposure. So whether that's geographic type of borrower, so corporate or consumer, there's not much government exposure. Actually, there's not really any government exposure at all in the portfolio now that that was in was in the portfolio with the the global sovereign credit mandate, but we took that out based on kind of future return expectations. So right now we're kind of focusing on two types of borrowers, corporates and consumers. Consumers, of course, off offer a an element of diversification from kind of the broader corporate earning cycle. And so that consumer exposure we see primarily in Libor Max and in One Sharp. You kind of place in the capital structure, right? So you You kind of place in the capital structure, right? So you can, within kind of alternative credit. You can be more senior or more subordinated. So we have various types um within within our mandates. And then kind of importantly, the type of collateral um backing the assets. So um whether that is kind of balance sheet capital. Um, or things like residential property, which we which we see with um the One Sharp mandate. So. Within alternative credit. Looking again to broaden exposure beyond just kind of. Corporate earnings cycles, but to different types of borrowers and 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 types of collateral. Now, as I mentioned at the outset, if we flip to the the next slide, um, you know, a kind of key component in in this current environment, right? Is the degree to which these assets are linked to inflation. Um, so here on this page, we have different types of income investments. Um, their yield, their liquidity, and whether or not they're in the Gainesville income segment. I would say, you know, as you're looking on on at this page and you're kind of noticing, okay, well, certain things seem. Like they have a very strong link to inflation, but they're not in our portfolio, things like, um, you know, senior secured infrastructure debt. The reason those tend to be not in the portfolio is one of two reasons. Either the yield is low, so it's not going to meet. Our um return needs, um, as stated at the beginning. Or they're quite illiquid, meaning not kind of able to move to cash within a kind of. Timeframe that we view as kind of appropriate for this type of portfolio. So somebody if you think about something like a senior secured infrastructure debt portfolio. That would typically be a closed end fund structure. Where your capital is locked up for anywhere between five and 10 years, right? So not only you have a low yield there, but quite illiquid. So where we are playing is in the kind of more liquid, the semi liquid space. Where the yields are are um much higher. So. Great example on the page that we've discussed quite a bit and has performed quite well would be that bridge um short term lending, right? So kind of short duration loans, less than one year. Um, that allow any type of increase um in inflation costs to be kind of reflected in the in the underlying rates that are being charged to borrowers. And so that would be the one sharp mandate, and that is something that that is included within the portfolio. Um, Libor Max would be another good example. So that would that would fall under kind of two categories, both the CLO one there at the bottom, but also the floating rate high yield asset backed securities. So again. Very high carry per unit duration. So kind of a very high yield that provides a um buffer, if you will, in any type of rising rate environment. But also the 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 instruments there are floating rate, meaning that. As interest rates creep up, they reset and the interest rates being charged there, the income being generated kind of scales up alongside um rising cash rates or rising inflation. So the next slide then speaks to the the other component of the income sleeve. And that is the the real assets piece. Because the the way we think about, again, real assets is is not too dissimilar really from the way we think about alternative credit in that. We're looking to access kind of the broadest. Um. Base. Um, of underlying sectors that we can and and fundamentally looking to diversify exposure again from. Um, broader corporate earnings. And so. We have exposure to the traditional areas of except the traditional um sectors as Cole noted via principle. So. Things like office apartments, retail, um industrial. Now, th- those are the core sectors that make up the Odyssey index. They also tend to be the most economically sensitive sectors, right? So when looking to add to the um real assets portfolio, we're looking to access sectors. Um, that are less sensitive, but also able to generate returns commensurate with our objectives. So things like storage. Things like healthcare, things like beta, things like energy and water resources, um, social infrastructure. Things like that. So again, looking to broaden exposure beyond just those kind of traditional areas that tend to be the most economically sensitive. The next slide provides kind of a good um proof point in terms of. You know, long term return expectations of kind of a real assets portfolio versus equity, right? Kind of to my point at the beginning, what you're seeing here. So this is starting at the beginning of two thousand eight. So it includes the financial crisis. Um, and what you're seeing really. Is what we were kind of modeling at the beginning, which is ultimately very similar return profile or long term return expectation, not return profile, but long term return expectation. With a much smoother return profile. So the purple line is equities, the green line is real assets or real estate. And what you're seeing, right, is just a much smoother line um on that real assets front than you do see with the purple line, but you end up at a roughly, you know, similar spot. And the key driver behind that, of course, is the income component, right? Which is allowing for that stable return profile, whereas the the purple line is being driven much more by growth.
Are these particular indexes you're showing here on the scrap?
Yep. Um, so the indexes are are kind of noted at the bottom. Um, for the equity index, that's ACQ, so global equities. Uh, if we were to use just the S and P five hundred, it'd be a little bit higher. Um, but similar kind of story. And on the real assets, it's a fifty fifty um of a private global infrastructure and global real estate index. Again, these are index returns, but kind of the point of the chart here is um.
But we wouldn't be in, we're not invested in global infra in infrastructure.
No, no, we are, we do not hold global infrastructure um currently.
So you're using indexes that don't really apply to us.
Well, it's more of it. It's so it's not what I'm showing here is not necessary to say. This is what Gainesville's portfolio will do. It's more to show that if you're comparing global equity and global real assets. Historically, right, returns have been um quite similar. The differences have been primarily on the kind of volatility front. Which is something that if we were to show.
These are kind of cherry picked indexes, I have to say.
It's not relevant.
But I mean, I understand what your point is, but your cherry picking index is to make your point.
Um, well, yes and no. I mean, so what we're showing here is a global equity index, and we're comparing that against a global real assets portfolio. But yes, to the degree that Gainesville holds a portfolio that's primarily domestic equity. Um, and domestic real assets with much more of a focus on. Um, real estate as opposed to to infrastructure. Um, yeah, of course. I would say also too, I mean, the. The infrastructure assets are not really. It what's, you know, it's the real estate component here that's that's been the the higher returning piece versus infrastructure. Um, but. Yeah, I take take it's fair point, William. Um, more a point here is more to just show. Um, historically in a global context. Two types of asset classes and and kind of similar return expectations, but um. You know, the difference being primarily driven by volatility. And I'm just kind of flipping back just to look, I mean, so. We could do, and happy to follow up to, but we could, we could generate a similar chart. I think that would ju- you know, with our longest held, um, I think principal, right, has been the longest held. Real asset strategy going back to. Um. You know, February of two thousand five. Um. And we don't have any, so do we have a ten year number here? Yeah, so principal over the last 10 years has done eleven point one percent. Right? And if we look at Vanguard, um, do we have Vanguard? We don't have Vanguard for 10 years, but we have our large cap equity segment for the past 10 years, and it's been twelve percent. Right?
Yeah, but 10 years doesn't capture what happened with real estate in two thousand seven through two thousand nine. You know, so if you include that time period, those returns are going to look different. And also, we've been locked up a number of times with with principal. I mean, the, you know, I I like principal, they're a good real estate manager, but. One of the issues we have with that type of investment is when the markets get volatile, they 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 lock us up and they become illiquid. So I mean, you know, there are there are multiple factors that we look at.
Absolutely. Yeah, and. And that's a that's a good point, William, and a a reason why we don't, you know. Why that income segment is limited to the thirty percent that it is, right? And and why we're not holding, you know, a fifty fifty type of portfolio or a much larger allocation, because those points around liquidity. Um, do matter. So absolutely.
Can I, I don't mean to jump ahead, but can can I ask you a question about one of your graphs, the the uh the bell curve graph that showed expected returns? Based on different models and. You know, I don't, I don't want to steer the discussion away from somewhere the board members want to go, but. When I look at that graph and I compare it to. Your. Capital market assumptions, which you have listed.
Yep.
On page twenty two. And again, I don't want to get too far ahead, but I I have some issues with your capital market assumptions and. But on page twenty two, you're showing equity, US and global equity passive. Your your cap, your ten year median capital return assumption is at seven percent and six point seven percent. And then the asset classes that I look through here and see that are part of our our income segment. Whether it be the alt credit or the uh the real estate. And I look at those 10 year median returns. They seem to be substantially lower. And so I guess I'm wondering how. The allocations to that thirty percent income segment. With those lower expected returns, how you're getting a similar expected return profile for the entire portfolio if it were all equity versus thirty percent in the income segment.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but just just eyeballing these, it doesn't seem like like that that's possible.
Sure. So the kind of. Key difference there and what's not being and what is not reflected in those kind of generic capital market assumptions. Are two things, but one is the kind of alpha expectations, right, of the individual managers. So all those capital market assumptions assume kind of general passive exposure to the degree that you can do it. And then there's the the specialist's component as well. So a lot of those real asset managers are accessing. Not just kind of your core direct property markets, but specialist type um sectors with higher yields. Um, higher um expected returns as a result. So you'll see, right? I mean, the all equity portfolio of seven point nine percent is also above what's shown in the capital market assumptions for equity, right? And that's a function of of underlying alpha assumptions as well.
So. Without, you know, doing actual calculations, it it sounds like you're. You're applying a a much higher alpha to the income segment managers than you are to the equity managers. Would that be fair to say?
Uh, I would say fair, although it's in alpha. So alpha in the equity segment tends to be completely driven by manager skill. Right? Meaning this manager is going to outperform the index based on their stock picks by, you know, X percent. Alpha within the um income segment tends to be a a both manager skill versus venture, but also kind of opportunity set. Right? So it's a little bit different in that within the income segment, they're able to access areas that there just aren't kind of passive. Benchmark exposures to. So that alpha component being reflected. Is skill, both in terms of them outperforming some type of benchmark, but also skill in terms of accessing an opportunity set.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks. Didn't mean to interrupt your presentation.
No, I I mean, that's that's what we're here for. So happy happy to answer any questions um. On any of this. But I mean, I I mean, all I really have left, William, was the. Um, I think slide. Let's see. Is it eighteen really, which is the same idea as what we showed for alternative credit, but just. Components of um the real asset space. Um, where you have a more direct tie to inflation and and those we don't and where we're playing, right? So, you know, things like um. Renewable energy and kind of development um type strategies. Currently not in the portfolio, either due to low yield or general illiquidity, um, or or a mix of both. Um, and things like. Um. You know, longer duration real estate, triple net leases, shorter duration real estate. Um, where the liquidity, where the yields are higher, the liquidity is is higher. Um, are within the portfolio. So kind of high level messaging here being that. Elements within um both the income, within the alternative credit and the real asset segment. Um, are well positioned for an environment of inflation, and they're also well positioned. Um, you know, relative to equities for a potential kind of economic downturn, given they're just general less. Um, less sensitive to corporate earnings cycles. And that kind of income component of the returns. So the next two slides, nineteen and and twenty, just provide. Um, for the committee's benefit, a reminder of what sits within each, within each um segment. Um, current targets, our return objectives, and the fees that are being being charged.
And I mean, I I will admit, there's no doubt that the income segment has benefited this portfolio, you know, certainly for for this calendar year. And this plan's performance is is better than the. The. General employee's pension plan performance, because they have basically a ninety percent allocation to equities. But, you know, when the market recovers, that 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 performance. That relative performance is going to reverse. Just keep that in mind.
So and I have a question now, without asking you to be a prognosticator. Are are you suggesting that the our position that we're that we're in today regarding the income segment versus the total equity is where we ought to be? And that in fact. That will continue to accrue benefit to the to the plan? I guess that's the number one to answer. And and nobody appears to be what to want to be a prognosticator.
All right, was it, was that a question to ask or to to William?
Yeah, it was related to the netherworld, but probably to you, because I don't know that you have an answer to that. Except portfolio is based, it appears to me. Based on what we have now, your portfolio seems to indicate that. I won't say more is better, but our our existing mix is better than if we were to move. More closely into the all closer to the eighty or eighty five percent equity position.
Yeah, I think I would say if if we could predict. So I I think what's tricky is the last couple of downturns from an episode since the crisis, we had. You had a kind of a small downturn in twenty eleven. You had a sell off in twenty eighteen towards the end, and then you had the COVID one. And each each of those examples, the drawdown and subsequent recovery. Was quite quick. Um, and the kind of the common theme throughout all of those was that you were in the midst of a um kind of. Fed easing. Um, environment, right? So accommodative monetary policy throughout, right? Right now. And again, we don't have visibility be, you know, beyond the next couple of months in terms of what the Fed's going to do. But right now, given the inflation pressures. Uh, you know, the incentives from the from the Fed standpoint seems to be the opposite, right? So tightening financial conditions. Um, and the degree to which that drives this country into a recession. Um, and an extended deleveraging cycle, you know, remains to be seen. Um, but point being. We would expect. Higher volatility um over the next couple of years. Um, and potentially a much slower eventual recovery than we've seen in previous markets. Um, just given that difference in Fed posture. Now, of course, anything could happen. And if you told me. You know, markets were going to recover to where they were at the beginning of the year and the next 12 months. You know, would an all equity portfolio be more favorable? Yes, but we never know that in hindsight. And so I think, you know, given the particularly high levels of uncertainty. Um, now. This type of structure where you have a strong, we have a much stronger kind of visibility in terms of. Um, future returns within that income segment versus that growth segment. Um, this type of structure is is kind of the one we would want to be in um for this environment. But again, we've put these return objectives here on the page, because I mean, we expect, I mean, we hold these managers to these numbers. And we expect to be held to them too. So I mean, when we're looking back in a few years. This, these are the types of returns that we would expect um in a strategies like, you know, Libor Max or or one. Um, and if strategies like, you know, Libor Max or or One Sharp are are failing to meet those over time, you know, that's a, I think, a time to revisit the strategy and 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 particularly, in particular, the um the managers. So this is not a kind of set it and forget it type of exercise.
Any other questions from anyone? I know we covered a lot of material here.
Yeah, maybe I'm looking at this way oversimplified. It's the first time or the last time in my life I do that. But back on ten, in your outlook. Um, in this, specifically underlying government slows or pace of spending, you are referring to the government's ability to appropriate new funds. Because a few meetings ago, there was a great slide, one of the clearest pictures of why didn't we see this coming? Was the growth in the M one money supply that happened over about a twenty four month period? Most of those funds still haven't been deployed. They're still filtering. I mean, the direct to consumer stimulus. Those folks did exactly what the government wanted. They spent it. But when you give money to state and local governments, my experience has been we are not as um quick to to allocate and deploy those funds. So this is this idea that that we reach a two and a half percent inflation rate. Like, that's going to require some type of a fix in the supply chain, because you still have a lot of money that's going to be chasing pure goods. It'll just be the government that will be driving up the inflation rate at that point. Am I simplifying that or?
No, no, it's a it's a good way of looking at it. And I I think we would we would largely kind of agree with your assessment. I think, you know, a key difference, right, is in terms of the components of CPI, right? It's consumer spending that is going to be driving a lot of those in terms of, you know, you you strip out energy and food and just kind of focus on core, right? You're looking at thing, you know, the largest component there, right, is is rent, right? And so year over year changes and and rental prices. And, you know, what's driving, that's driven by consumers, not necessarily government spending. It's what we've seen since, you know, to your point, what we've seen since twenty twenty is that those elevated saving rates that we've seen with consumers have now come all the way back down and then some, such that they're now savings rates are now lower than they were pre-COVID um for the consumer. So you have that combined with no more further stimulus payments as well as kind of a rising rate environment, which is increasing kind of costs um for consumers in a variety of ways. In addition to just a generally high food and energy prices, all of which we think is going to support kind of an eventual um decline in consumer spending, that feeds through into a decline in in corporate earnings growth. That's how you eventually start moving towards a potential um recession. But I would say that that two and a half percent, um, you know, it, you're right. You know, I mean, in order to reach that near term, you're going to need some um unclogging of of the of the supply chain. And they're just, it seems like any time that's about to get going, something new creeps in, whether it's China going back down into a kind of fall lockdown mode, um, whether it's Russia invading some, you know, countries like Ukraine. Um, but the market, current market pricing in terms of kind of um inflation expectations and and the way we kind of look at that would be five year breakevens um is right around that point. So right around two five, two eight five. And what's been kind of interesting over the last couple of months is inflation expectations from a market perspective actually peaked back in um March. And they've now, over the last couple of months, been trending down. So we've you've been seeing a lot more kind of press about inflation, inflation, inflation. Um, but within markets, that story seems to have passed. And inflation expectation is actually coming down because people are kind of looking forward now and expecting this Fed rate hike cycle to weigh on on consumer spending. Um, and actually, what you're now seeing is the story switched from an inflation one to one more of a of a kind of recessionary type of story. And and the way that's kind of reflected in market pricing is just starting to see the price of risk assets um kind of blow out. So spreads within corporate credit markets so that the excess um yield you're expected to be paid on versus a government bond. That's increased quite a bit over the past couple of months. You've seen the decline in in equity markets as well over the last couple of months, which is another good proxy. Um, all of which speaks less to inflation concerns and much more to um corporate earnings concerns and and potential recessionary um scenarios. So I'm not sure if that answers your question. I would say you're thinking about it the the right way. Um, government spending, you know, can support an extended kind of period of inflation. But I would say that kind of the key components of CPI tend to be much more consumer oriented um than government and what we kind of mean here in terms of government spending. Coming back, it's more in terms of the support programs that have been that were extended to consumers during the pandemic have now been um kind of removed.
Yeah, but yeah, there is a, there is a subset of goods and services that both the government and consumers intersect in that diagram. Um, and a lot of that government spending is governmental trickle down economics is going to end up in the pockets of consumers because somebody's going to build those roads. Somebody's gonna, all I know is that how long ago did we receive our ARPA funds, William? Do you remember?
We got some just a week or so ago, sixteen million.
The first sixteen is already erratic, right?
Yeah.
Or is that the second Trump? Is that the second Trump to the sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. So and I suspect the actual deployment of those funds, probably less than half a million dollars at this point. So and I don't know that we are that much different than other local governments that have received. Some have been more efficient than we are, some have been less. But I mean, those funds are going to be used in the same pond as for goods as consumers use. So I would love to be, and y'all know me as the eternal optimist, so I think two and a half by second half twenty twenty three.
To re-reduce myself.
It's just, it is hopes and prayers, you know?
That's an interesting observation, particularly, well, not necessarily about what we're talking about here, but domestically locally. I I've been hearing those numbers. Know that's the case.
So you don't think a recession will drive down the inflation because of the supply of goods shortage generally? Like it did in oh eight or not?
I I think the key is unclogging the supply chain at this.
Tell you, they were all on I ninety five yesterday, unclogging it, so.
Yes. Highest fuel prices are, people are still.
I know, it was driving really bad in seventy five in town on my way to a pump. I'm thinking, where are these people getting the money to drive?
Well, you want to see I eighty five?
So I don't know. I I
No, that's
I don't know what to do about it. I'm just saying that, boy, I'd love to see it that optimism.
The people who make, I'm afraid, decisions about our ARPA money, for example, and I'm talking to that present company, obviously. But other people who are making those decisions aren't usually in the habit of being able to allocate that amount of money that quickly. They'd be considered that generously, uh, that generous of a benefactor. So I think they're keeping them very close to the best and kind of waiting to see what happens. And who really needs it, who wants the portion of the pie that hasn't been allocated through those?
Locally speaking, I think they've already determined how they want to spend it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, exactly. Locally, I think we've got to handle, but I think there's a lot of places that I've been
I think they got some specific profit. Just agree with you there. But they also, a lot of them are conceptual buckets, right? Affordable housing, nine million dollars. Well, what does that mean?
Oh, with grocery.
Then you go through.
Yeah, we want to fund a grocery.
That's earned some money in that one.
You get a plan, well, maybe not that.
Colin, Zach, did you guys have any other um information you wanted to talk about?
Now, this is a, this is good insight, though, in terms of uh some of the local inflation dynamics, so.
You see how the white below responds.
Right. We're acting as a weak solve global issues on a local level. I think that is consistent with the manner which our local
Think globally and accurately.
Anyway, thanks, Stephen.
All right. Well, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I don't think the board has any other questions and we'll follow up if they do.
Okay, sounds great. Well, we appreciate the time and the dialogue.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Good day.
All right. Move the next agenda item to July or August.
Can I make a couple of comments about the presentation real quickly? I don't want to spend too much time on this. And, you know, they make fair points. It's just that personally, it seems to me that they construct this presentation to support their delegated investment program that that we're part of in the seg in the income segment. And, you know, I'm not arguing that in the current volatile markets that this portfolio is probably going to look better than a ninety percent equity portfolio, right? I completely disagree. Well, I, when I say completely, within a range of a hundred to two hundred basis points, I disagree with many of their capital market assumptions. And I believe that they they use these assumptions to support the income segment recommendations. And I don't agree with them. It appears that they're applying a lot of alpha to the income segment managers. They're not applying to the to the equity managers. That may be valid, but I would like to actually see the numbers are using to build these models that they say that will will achieve the same returns with a thirty percent income segment as we would with a ninety or ninety five percent equity. I I don't believe that. Secondly, on page twenty three, they keep making the point that that we got a fee reduction by going into the delegated investment.
We didn't talk about that at all.
That's completely not true. That six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars that they're showing, that's based on what they were going to propose our our portfolio looked like. And that was going to include hedge funds and or private equity, which we were never going to do. So it was built on a false structure of a portfolio that did not exist and would not exist. So we didn't save anything and we haven't really saved anything. Now, it hasn't cost us anything, but I have a hard time with a consultant that we're paying money to putting the idea out there that they're saving us money when they're not. But to me, that's borderline fraudulent. And, you know, I just, I don't agree with it, and I think it's a huge misrepresentation. Now, my concern would be if the if the program were costing us money, and it's not. Um, you know, twenty thousand, give or take, you know, either way, doesn't make much difference in this portfolio based on our investment management fees. But, you know, I just, I just want to, you know, point out that I don't
They're taking some of the work. I mean, they are handling some of the workload, right?
Well
problems we had in finance. I can't imagine, I mean, would you all have the support to schedule all the money managers and?
The the much managers take five minutes to schedule. There's there's no
We're strategize, I guess.
Go back to what William said, how they sugarcoat some of their things. Are they a monitor or they manage? Did we get the managers' report this time and it didn't look good? I just don't understand the two worlds.
I have a feeling what we saw today or heard today or talked about today is a similar slide, maybe the same slide that I don't know how eleven to seven other of their clients are going to receive. And they they probably will all have the same question you have, William, about can can it better reflect our specific portfolio? And I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I just don't agree with the with the assumptions they're making about the returns.
Well, that's first of all.
Well, I just, that's just
Let me ask, because a lot of you gentlemen have way more sense of investment knowledge than myself. The projection there was what, about ten year, the two models?
Right, yeah.
Okay, is it, is it unreasonable to say that they would fare about the same in a given decade? When, if you're, if you do have a low, obviously, in that decade, the the equity and the the large growth and everything is gonna plummet while your fixed income doesn't as much. And then there's probably some benefits to selling from your fixed income during those times and not realizing your losses, maybe? Well, and then in the turnaround market, you know, you you would gain that money back. You know, I don't, I know that Dr. Denzil used to always say, if we just stay in the S P five hundred, we'd be fine. But I don't, you know.
And it'd be five
How does that work when you got to sell fifty thousand or whatever this year, twenty million to pay for stuff?
When you think about twenty million, that's about a couple percent of the, two or three percent of the portfolio uh, or three or four or five percent. And and, you know, we may move to doing that quarterly rather than at the fiscal year end, because that's been recommended by an auditing consultant. But, you know, that's, I I'm not concerned about having to take cash out. You know, it's such a small percentage that, um, you know, even if you take it out at the bottom of the market, it's not going to impact the annual return of the total portfolio.
Right now, our our annual input there, because we're, let's just put it in annual.
Right.
Pay the bill. But what, okay, go ahead, Steve.
So I think Dr. Denzil was focused and when he, because I remember it was about the
I was thinking about it when I heard.
The the V's associated with passive versus active. Are we getting the alpha? You know, I don't think you have to put the whole.
I know you didn't mean that, but I I know just the idea there is, like you said, working the indexes versus paying all the managers.
Same. And and we do have a, at least a snapshot view of passive versus active management. Because we we do an act, Vanguard is essentially an index fund that's more passive than managed. I don't know that the ten year investment horizon is as relevant to me as I sit here because this is a perpetual investor, the plan. For example, Eugene, we get to amortize the liability associated with your retirement over your career twenty five years.
Well, what was the act beyond the city, though? If we have two bad years in a row and the valves come out and they say we need
My city would have to put in a higher contribution rate until the markets recovered, more or less.
I'm concerned for the sponsor.
Not, I mean, for any twenty five year period, you'll find slices where those those contribution rates started to spike because of dot com bust in the early aughts, a housing bust, you know? There's different strategies that were employed to take out that liability as opposed to just
There's always a new liability, though, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of the, okay, so you're showing on, I'm not, from my perspective, as a, as a taxpayer more than as trustee, I think funding standards is a terrible measure of in and of itself is around. To me, it's the cost of the of the sponsor to provide the fact that is a reason. And that's through contribution rates. So and I mean, real contribution rates. If you took out a P O B to ex to extinguish some of that liability, those debt service are not part of the contribution, but they are part of of resources that could have been used for other services.
Or it's hard dollars.
Yeah, so.
So since I've only been here since January, this delegated plan is the only thing that I have experience with. How did it work prior to? Was William Towers Watson even involved at all?
Yeah, so Willis Towers Watson has, in one form or another, been the plan consultant since around two thousand or a little before two thousand. They they merged with other companies twice, I think, over this twenty something year period. So it started out as Watson Wyatt, then Towers Watson, and then Willis Towers Watson. And it was a more traditional type of consulting arrangement at that for up until probably the last uh, three or four years or five years. And so that arrangement, you know, that we had, it 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 didn't really affect what they recommended. They would still be recommending like a thirty percent type of income segment, probably. Because that's just, that's their corporate nature. That's what That's what they do. We're probably their only public pension plan client. And the return assumptions for corporate plans are structured much differently. They have to use a risk-free rate of return. So, in my opinion, Willis Towers Watson is much more concerned with book market volatility because of their corporate clients. Because those clients, they have to fund their pension plans using a risk-free rate of return. And so they're using, you know, a three to five percent rate of return assumption. And they're forced to fund it at that, at that rate. They wouldn't have changed their recommendations. And in fact, you know, for most of that time, we had somewhere between a twenty and thirty percent allocation to fixed income and real estate. What the delegated investment platform does is it reduces some fees on a couple of our managers a little bit, not by much. International and the real estate. Right. Get a little bit for it. So we're essentially paying Willis Towers instead of those. And, you know, as they mentioned before, they, they, they claim it, it makes staff's job easier because they they take some of our workload. Well, we never bargained the agreements, the, the contracts with the managers. We use Bob Klausner to do that, and we still use Bob to do that. So that hasn't gone away. The one thing they do, and I'll, I'll give them credit for this, is when we hire new managers or we bring them on, they work with State Street, the custodian bank, to set up those accounts, whereas in the past, we would have had to do that. But, you know, how, how much of a workload?
And vetting some of the managers.
Well, they, they would always vet, they would never bring us managers that weren't vetted.
True, that's right.
In the, in the past, rather than recommending one or two managers, which they bring to the board and expect the board to accept, they would bring a shortlist of five or six, and all the historical data related to those managers, the board would look at them and decide to bring in two or three for presentations and then select the manager that, that they thought was a best fit for, for the program. That part of, that's what the delegated investment platform does. It's really set up to be a, a situation where the board doesn't even have to approve the managers. But we didn't allow that, that aspect of it to, to be put into place. The board still has to approve the managers.
So, which actually gets to me the very simple question. Has it provided us efficiency and nimbleness in that process? Yes or no? Because that really was, to me, the salient point to why you might want to consider it. It wasn't, the fees were nice, but I, I never believed that in the end, it, the cost, the cost is the cost, right? Because there were manager selection processes that took six to nine months to complete.
By the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and to the board's credit, because give us the list, we'll do the shortlist, and then we will see each one, and we, and if that took three board meetings to get them all in, we want to give it time and consideration. So I there was value in that level of, of but I don't. So my question is, that, how much time have we saved and has that resulted in better plan returns? If, you know, the answer to that is yes, and I don't even know how you would do the research on that, then it makes sense.
It still takes Bob six, six to twelve months to, to negotiate an agreement.
Yes, from legal.
So, I mean, but we, we might have saved.
It might be three months ahead.
Yeah.
How long have we been on the delegate?
About three.
Is that even a long enough period of time to compare? I mean, do we even, have we even been part of this for long enough to have like a legitimate comparison between the two different ways of doing things?
You know, there are benefits to not having to go through a shortlist, but what you're doing by not, by not evaluating five or six managers is you're giving control of the portfolio to Willis Towers Watson. And if you're comfortable doing that, that's fine. I'm not sure I agree with their investment philosophy. Their very, the very core of their investment philosophy I disagree with. So for me, it's an issue, but for the board, it may not be.
The managers that bring forward are?
The managers are fine if that's the type of manager you want. I don't agree with the income segment part of the portfolio, and that's where all of the manager, you know, selection has been over the past three or four years. So.
But that's a separate issue, right? I mean, like, we can change our allocation without abandoning this delegated.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, like, prior to twenty-ten, weren't most public pension funds forty percent bonds and fixed income?
Sixty, forty was more or less.
Sixty, forty, forty was the, the.
Fixed.
The fixed. And right now, we're already one of the higher.
Well, seventy, thirty is pretty standard now, I believe.
Oh, I thought that's one of the reasons the state's always a bummer.
I don't know anything about standard. All I know is I've been in this business for forty, forty-five years. That, whether it's working at least. And the zero, the zero risk approach has always been a bed, bedrock of public pension plans.
Right.
Much more so, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of the private sector, so really, I don't know, I can't speak to that. And I'm also surprised to learn that we're their only public pension plan. But I mean, the, the, the lack of, the, the risk aversion for public pension plans has always been, is, is, you know, it's, if it had been in the Bible, it would have been a book. And just simply because you've got people who depend upon what we say we're going to give them, that being us, when it's when time comes to. And so I don't, I don't have the, I, I don't have the aversion to, to, for a higher, a higher than.
In, you know, to be fair, their income segment, the, those managers are going to give the portfolio lower volatility. But, but what I would point out, and, and this isn't an exact indicator, but if you look at pages five and six, and the performance numbers listed there, and you, on page five, you have basically all the equity managers, right? Look at the five and ten-year numbers for the dark gray shaded segments. And then also look at the benchmarks for each of those segments. The Russell one thousand, the Russell one thousand value, the S and P five hundred. Look at those five and ten-year returns. And then come down and look at the, now, we haven't had the income segment for five or ten years, but they do provide five and ten-year benchmark numbers. Look, look at the benchmarks for those managers compared to the benchmarks for the equity managers. They're half or less over a five and, over the five and ten-year periods for everything except real estate. Real estate is, is. Well, it is, but it's an indicator of what you should expect your managers to do. I mean, it's a benchmark for a reason that because.
When they do your annual evaluation, you've reached, you're doing well, you need to improve it in this area.
And ten-year, five years from now, it's probably going to look a little crappier for equity. But, well. Our five, at least five, for sure.
Well, you said the general pension is, what, a ninety-ten split? And how long has it been like that?
Since the early two thousands.
And how does it perform? I mean, have you compared the two?
Yeah, but we look at it all the time. It's, it's outperformed this portfolio by, about a hundred and fifty basis points annualized, which doesn't sound like a lot.
But one and a half percent.
Every year.
The way you're talking about this one, yeah.
So you're talking about the difference between nine percent and ten?
The magic of compounded.
So the ten-year number is ten percent on this one.
What's the soon growth rate?
So a hundred basis point.
The general plan?
It's the same, seven point. We just lowered it to seven point seven five.
Well, that, I mean, now, that would be an interesting comparison, I mean, that, that's not that I, well, anyway, that'd be more, much more of an apples and apples comparison.
Since nineteen ninety-four. It's a total funds eight point seven two percent. Ten years, ten point four.
Well, and keep in mind, you're looking at it as of May with a twenty percent down here today equity market. So, you know, you're, you're, you're skewing it. And you're skewing the equities quite a bit this year.
Right.
That's the May thirty-first number.
Well, and, yeah. Risk conversion is, risk conversion benefits to some extent, I think, the credibility of the plan.
And, and to your point, you know, you, you don't have to get out of the, you don't have to get out of the delegated investment program to change the asset allocation.
Yeah.
But to me, part of the delegated program, what, part of what Willis Towers Watson uses, the delegated program sort of authority that they have is to focus on these income segment managers. But, you know, it's the board's choice with what you want the asset allocation to be. And I don't want to draw this discussion out. This was just something that, you know, Harvey had asked about, and some of the other board members weren't familiar with, with this arrangement that we have and, and what it meant and what it included. So that was the reason they, they created this presentation.
I would really like to wait a year to, to look at that, but.
When you're off the board.
You need for somebody else to look at it?
No, I think I'll still be here.
I'm not recommending changing the asset allocation right now.
Just because it has been such a, a great decade, I, I think it's hard to, to look at it. You know, but one, one bad year might skew it ridiculously, too. I don't know.
Well, I also give you about a certain sponsor. It's all their, you look at their, they estimate returns, what their objectives, way up. Maybe true numbers about three percent.
Some of my fears, some of that fixed stuff, I think's going to be tied to the housing market, and if that takes a major dip, maybe people, all those loans going to rebuild homes and stuff, it might not.
Well, I don't think. You at six percent. No, yeah, you don't see the same low-quality mortgages now that you did back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
Two years ago, I would agree with you that they're, they weren't giving everybody money, but this last year or so, I mean, it's been ridiculous.
A lot more cash buyer now.
It was funny, in, in oh-five, one of our guys got hired, walked into Bank of America. He'd been here three months, making thirty-five thousand on the book, something like that. In twenty minutes, he was approved for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was in oh-five. And it's, it's kind of swung that way again.
Yeah.
Like, I had to refinance rolling some of my wife's student loans or whatever. It's a good interest rate. I knew they were going to go up. They didn't even bother to assess it. They were like, yeah, you had one a few years ago. And it's, they're like, you're, you can get up to triple what it's worth. And I was like, no, no, just, just that, just a little bit, like, I couldn't believe the number they threw out there and without even sending somebody out to the house, so.
Well, and again, I'm not recommending any changes right now. I just wanted the board members to have this information, so you could think about it.
Nevertheless, an interesting discussion. For all of us to be novices.
I'd like to do a little research to see how, how, how we are as far as our standard, but.
I mean, I don't know.
To Eugene's point about housing sensitive impacts, that is one sharp's hundred percent of its strategy.
Right, I, I don't think they're going to be.
Throwing money at slippers and hoping to get it back, you know, at a, at a higher rate, higher interest rate, short duration, but.
I don't think that's a secure, but, investment. I don't get paid the big bucks.
Wonderful world of investment opportunities out there.
Can you take them up?
Where they come.
Very risk averse kind of guy.
Although I, I review the managers, I don't have the time to, to actually do ongoing in-depth analysis on the managers. So that's what we rely on, Willis Towers Watson, to do. And, and what you would hope is that if they see some issues with a manager like one sharp, that they'll come to the board. And, you know, they'll say, well, we, we think we've seen them perform as well as we're going to, and, and maybe we want to shift assets away. Now, the problem is, with a, like, it is with a lot of these, it takes time to get your money out of these managers, especially in a bad market, because they're illiquid.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, the underlying asset.
Illiquid.
Sometimes it hurts, sometimes it's sad.
Well, then you become.
The liquid ones will call and make it happen in a few days.
Yeah. Well, so, like principle, they're liquid until the market locks up, and then they, they put a, they put a gate on, on any withdrawals, and, you know.
That's what Brian says.
So you know, it's, it can be an issue, but, you know, we, we'll just continue to look at it.
Not to pull on it, but does it send you back on your financial disclosure forms? Because I didn't get a response this year, but I used to have a year of it.
No, but, I mean, we don't get anything that would go directly to you as the.
Usually they, they mail me a copy.
Oh, you know, I never, I never.
I got an email back from, I said, lunch.
From the supervisor of elections.
I forget the lady's name that deals with those in particular that she responded.
For a latch. Yeah, I should email mine. I suck at the math.
Sure, I'll find out if I didn't.
All right. So the best determinated, we'll talk about next meeting we have. Bob's present.
So the date of the next meeting?
That's, that's what we need. Did you have any input on the possibly July? Any report?
I just that it's been, it's been sent. And, you know, typically, the process is the, the divisional retirement will review it, and they'll send us, you know, a dozen or so questions about it, and we'll get those returned as soon as possible, and then it'll be approved. So I, I would make the point that although we've got this, the annual report itself submitted, and we hope to have the valve, and we'll talk about possibly scheduling a July meeting to approve the valve. But we hope to have the valve in a few weeks. And another component of the, the annual report submission is that they, they require, the state requires the submission of post audit financials. Probably will not have those until September. So there could be a delay in the receipt of the fiscal year twenty-one premium tax money, which we would normally receive in September of twenty-twenty-two. So it, it might be pushed into October or November or something like that.
Is that traditionally always been how the money came, the following fall?
Yeah.
So the first money we got was ninety-nine?
Um, I have to go back and.
Some places got it ninety-seven, but I don't think we.
So there was a base year.
We all, we did in ninety-seven, we just didn't get an increase from that.
Right, right. So, yeah.
Will you know the amount beforehand, even if it's not dispersed until later?
We will. Normally, we'll get a notification in July or August what our share amounts will be.
All right, so.
So I did, we did want to see if the board wanted to meet in July. We don't currently have a July meeting scheduled.
Do we want to pick two days? That way we give Bob an option?
Yeah, or, or just even a week. You know, if there's a week in there, I would suggest the third or fourth week of July, if, you know, if there are dates that specific that would work for you, for members. I think what we need to talk about is there's a disability that we want to review, there's the issue of the vested terminated.
Will that be ready by then?
I had to skip Bob's.
Maybe.
The stuff is in.
Okay.
It was a, it's, man, God, Keith Collins was, I think, the last one this board has.
No, we've had a few since I've been on. Couple, couple police officers.
Okay.
A firefighter.
But they were.
Yeah. Last week of July and first of August is not good for me.
Maybe the third week of July?
Third week is okay.
So I'll, I'll present Bob with some, some dates and include everyone else on the, on the email to see if, if those dates worked for you as well. I would typically, you know, try to schedule it for the same Wednesday at nine AM. Maybe the third week of July.
That would be dedicated just to that issue, is that true?
No, it would be best determined, there's some, some questions about how we did things in the past. The disability and maybe the valve.
We wouldn't schedule Willis Towers Watson or manager. It would just be some internal discussion. So it would be.
So, and if we, will we get all that paperwork beforehand?
Yeah, that's what I've asked. That was one of the questions I'd sent Bob a few weeks ago.
Because in the past, no, we've got all the documents to look through before we came in.
Oh, yeah, you'll have it beforehand.
Okay.
It's the extent to how much of it. Because we, the board hires an independent medical review officer. Gets all of the records, okay, Eugene? And then they formulate a short summary and.
We may disagree with them, but that's.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so. But he doesn't. But he doesn't say yes or no, he gives you the facts.
Medical review officer. I thought that occurred after the initial. Evaluation in front of the board. So, when, when they present with documentation saying that I was.
So when they, when they present an application for disability. They get an affidavit that lists all their. Providers, and it's a release to send that stuff to you, the board's. So, so that's part of the process of disability. We don't have to say yes, they can apply, do that.
So when the board is given the, the recommendation from the medical doctor, that's not their personal doctor?
No, it is independent. Now, it, it is based largely on records received from their treating physicians.
I thought, see, I thought that was from their.
Restrictions, permanency.
I thought that was from a workman's comp doctor or, or their personal doctor. I always thought it was from the work comp or their personal. And then we decided yea, nay, or medical review, where then it goes in front of three other doctors, correct?
No, it doesn't. It goes, it goes directly from their providers to the review. Kind of truncate the process so that it's already counted.
But there's still an option to have a, another medical review. Okay, all right.
Is that with a different doctor?
Yes, three, three doctors.
Well, I mean, depending on the number of providers individual has related to their condition or conditions that, you know. The plan definition's pretty easy. It's wholly and fully able to perform the essential functions of a police officer or firefighter. So it's not, it's not social security definition, it's an. And we, as the board, this is, well, you remember, this is the, uh, the issue that. That can we on the board direct the chief of police or the. Or the fire chief, that they have to retain a limited duty. Position. Indefinitely, I would suggest that's more overreach, but. Yeah, because it takes away from, it takes a person off a fire. That's one less person that could patrol.
Yeah, I mean, that's the purpose, that's the purpose of a worker comp benefit or, or retirement benefit. So you have a fully, fully staffed group of people out there doing what the. Taxpayer expects them to do. But then, yeah, they want to be, well, I guess dispatcher.
So. How many administrative police officer positions are we allocated?
I have no idea. Different police chiefs have, have had different attitudes towards that A P O position, actually. There were some that. I can't have a. I can't have a position that can't be deployed in the manner that G P D needs to deploy that asset.
And are they all in our pension plan, or do they fall in the general? Because that would be the difference, because if you're injured, you can't be a firefighter, then you can't stay in the pension. So you have to find a job outside.
They lose their certification, yeah.
Do they follow their.
If you get a doctor's note that says you're totally and permanently disabled as a firefighter, I'm pretty sure. Lose your minimum standards, but.
Yeah, I would agree that they are not a high-risk position anymore. Anyway, all right, just like I would say, an A P O probably is in a higher risk position. Is there any public comment?
There is probably here.
Seeing none, hearing none.
Not exactly.
And I should introduce Sue Lang, she's the new controller for the city. So, Jim, Sue joined us, uh, just a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you both.
Last Monday.
Your absence was truly noted, and we're glad you're here.
Uh, we're gonna shoot for the, is there any other member comment? We're gonna shoot for the third week of July, correct?
And I'll send emails to everyone and outlook advice once we confirm with Bob what, what day it works.
All right, uh, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll second that.
All in favor?